Call the meeting to order. Start with the pledge and then the roll.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Here.
Chairman Hewitt?
Here.
Commissioner Seig?
Here.
Commissioner Putnam?
Here.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
It is nice to see you all here.
And the first thing on the agenda is the presentation, is that?
That's correct, and I just wanted to acknowledge that we have Isaac Rosen also on there. So the first item is a presentation. We've got representatives from the Pacific Solar Company. They're going to be providing some educational information on solar energy. This was a request several months ago by Commissioner Kennedy, and through COVID, we finally were able to get them on the agenda, so we're really excited to have them here. So with that, I'm going to pass that over and let them have control.
Thank you for having us. This is Daniel Andrist with Pacific Solar. Got a presentation here, and I'm going to request to... Oh, I'm going to need availability to share screen. So a little bit about us, Pacific Solar. Over 25 years in the building industry, 15 of those years been solar. And we offer a full spectrum of solar solutions for commercial, residential, agricultural, government, and privately owned. Kind of a history of the company and our innovation leadership. In 2004 to 2006, our parent company, Valley Pacific Builders, built the first subdivision in Fresno that had solar as a standard option. So all the homes came with solar included as part of it, and there's a little write-up included in the Fresno B there about that subdivision. And we generally try and find the simplest solution for complex situations. When other companies will turn down a job opportunity because it's out of the scope or it's kind of out-of-the-box item, that's where we really excel, is being able to come up with creative solutions. And with that, one of our VPs of the company, Mike Ward, who's joining us today, is on somehow our... One of the manufacturers we use on their board of advisors. And just a quick look at some of the larger projects we've done. OK Produce, which is a food packing, big user, big system. It's 3.4 megawatt system, producing a little over 4.8 million kilowatt-hours a year and saving the customer $1.2 million annually. And then, of course, a First Five of California, system size a little over 200 KW, producing roughly 330,000 kilowatt-hours electricity and saving them $76,000 a year on their electricity costs. The manufacturer of equipment we use is SunPower. The reason we choose to be a SunPower partner is their track record in the industry, the equipment they use, and the quality of product they do. They're a 35-plus-year-old company. All they do is solar. They're not a division of another company, not a division electronics company. Their sole focus is solar and they're the leader in the industry. You can see, they've been doing solar since 1985, where the majority of the market and other large companies have been in since the early 2000s or even more recent than that. More importantly, they are producing the world's most sustainable solar solutions. They're the first manufacturer to have a complete recycling program and the first manufacturer to have a cradle-to-cradle certification, meaning from the beginning of the solar panel's life to the end of its life. It's environmentally friendly and reduces the impact on the environment from manufacturing to disposal recycling. Again, they make the complete solution, so a SunPower package system is not just panel A, inverter B, racking C. Everything comes from one manufacturer, covered under one warranty, and one solution that's made to work cohesively together. From a technology standpoint, they make the most sufficient cell in the market, but really important for, especially there in Avalon, it is the most durable for corrosive environments, such as areas right on the coastline that have a high cell content. And they're the most efficient panel on the market, world record-setting, we have 22.7% efficiency. And what that really means is doing more with less space. So in confined roofs and tight areas where you don't have a, you know, big ranch-style house with falling roofs, SunPower panels take up about 70% of the space of conventional solar panels, or on the flip side, being able to fit 30% more power in the same amount of space. And from a warranty standpoint, because everything comes from one company, it's one single warranty that covers all the components, and it's 25 years on the production, 25 years on the product instead of 10, which is the industry standard, and also 25 years on the service. So it's a complete comprehensive warranty that covers their entire system. Real quick video about SunPower and how solar works.
Solar is the most abundant energy source on Earth. But how do you turn this into this? In this video, we'll explore how SunPower systems turn sunlight into usable electricity and how that energy can help reduce your electric bill. When sunlight hits a solar cell, that energy is converted into electrons. As these electrons pass through the solar cell, they're converted into direct current electricity. And the more sunlight a solar cell converts, the more electricity it can produce. Here's where SunPower Maxion cells really shine. Their unique light-trapping surface and ultra-pure silicon help them convert more sunlight, even on cloudy days, and deliver more savings over time. Next, the electricity is sent to an inverter, which converts it into alternating current power, the type of power you use in your home. In many traditional or conventional solar systems, this takes place in a bulky external inverter. But every SunPower Equinox solar panel features a built-in microinverter to convert the power right at the source, boosting efficiency and enhancing system aesthetics. After that, the electricity is ready for use, running through your home to power appliances, charge devices, and more. But what if your system generates more energy than you're using? In many areas, you can send that excess energy back to the grid for a credit on future electric bills, a process known as net metering. You can also store the excess energy on-site with SunPower's SunVault storage system and access it during peak times, evenings, or power outages to reduce your dependency on the grid. And with SunVault storage, you get two times the power of conventional storage systems, not to mention more charge and discharge cycles, so you can run more of your home in a grid outage and get more lifetime use out of your battery. And if you ever wonder how your system is performing, you can quickly check in on the MySunPower monitoring app, including real-time updates on system production, energy bill savings, and more. Now that you know how SunPower solar works, find out what it can do for you, from lowering your monthly electricity bills to changing the way you think about energy.
So with that, I've got time for questions. The federal tax credit did get extended through the end of 2022 at 26%. That's really the only government incentive that is out there for solar, but the rest of the presentation, or my time, is to answer questions if anyone has any.
Well, we currently have it part of our building code. The people, when they do new construction, it's supposed to have solar. I see very few solar systems on roofs. So, as an observation.
When did that go into effect?
Last January, I believe, right? Last January?
That's correct. It went into effect last January.
And just for clarification, I believe that is a requirement for any new construction, not retrofits of existing structures.
So if you take a house down to its foundation and build a new house, it's not required?
I don't know if it's... I don't believe it's a requirement if you're replacing the structure in kind, but new development, that is a mandate.
Is it something that we could encourage? Or... I mean, I guess not, but that's kind of... I mean, here, it's not like a lot of new construction because there's no land. So everything is just being taken down, is being taken down, and...
It is. We actually just recently had a project that had completed, that the planning commission had approved. It was over on Eucalyptus. They had replaced... Actually, it didn't replace the structure, they had retrofitted the structure, and along with those retrofits, they had replaced the roof. And when they replaced the roof, they put in an entire new solar installation where none had previously existed. That project completed about four or five months ago.
That's wonderful, but that wasn't something that was required, correct?
That was not required, no.
Does this work for multi-unit buildings? Or do you have to get separate systems for each unit? That's been a bit...
Probably be a better question for the presenters. I don't know if you heard that question, but there was a question in there about how solar installation projects work for multi-unit buildings?
Yeah, I can take that. Depending on... So for condos, row homes, townhouses, very simple if you own the roof directly above it. There's generally a dividing line of where the property is. For multi-units where there's not one own roof, other things can be done where a property owner could build a solar array that's designed to offset individual meters on there. It's not as straightforward as you own the building, you own the roof, but it's not impossible either.
But it's expensive then, right? I mean, I have... I own and live in a triplex. I occupy at least two-thirds of it. I have two smaller one-bedroom apartments. And some solar plans in the past, I would have had to do three separate systems, and it... For a one-bedroom, it doesn't pay for itself, so... And I couldn't do my part of the building, I had to do all three. And that was more than one company over the past 20 years. You had to... And I own a fourplex. There are four apartments, and it would be prohibitive. I mean, I can't make a pencil out unless I would charge a lot more rent for each unit.
As far as if you owning the building, owning the roof, you can generally opt in... Have to verify that there is any reason... Maybe Mike can step in on this, that Edison, Southern California Edison, would make you offset every meter on that building. It is common where we're doing commercial or agricultural projects where they have some meters that they want to offset with power because the usage is substantial, and some that aren't worth doing, because the usage is very low or very seasonal. So as the building owner, you own the entire roof, you could just pick and choose which meters you offset. The other side of it too is it doesn't have to be one system for each meter. If there are three meters on there, it can be one system that offsets the usage of multiple meters on the same property. So you just build the system slightly larger to cover the, not just your usage, but the tenant usage, and then in the rent, you charge them for the electricity it produces versus them buying it from Edison. Or just simply the easy one, you know, they pay their meter fee to Edison and you get the benefit of your solar. Unless it's something in the building code there, there shouldn't be any reason why you'd have to offset all the meters because you own the entire building.
Unless it's master metered.
Right.
I've got a question. Is... If you include having solar on a new build, does it add any time to the permit process? I mean, are there any built-in bureaucratic delays that might make people shy to go in? Or is it pretty neutral and it just moves along with?
It's pretty straightforward. In fact, we're really lucky, our building official, John Gilbert, is extremely versed. His background is as an experienced electrician, so he's able to review those plans and can actually enhance the safety aspect of those. Because a lot of them have backup batteries or other components that are a part of that, but it's pretty straightforward.
And that's the biggest thing that we're seeing in California, especially over the past, you know, three to five years with the increase in wildfire, is just the ability with the storage systems and the reduction in prices that have come in solar and in the battery backup, that we're really seeing a benefit in areas where they are prone to power outages, that you can put a solar system in a storage for a reasonable amount and have that ability to have backup power.
Any other questions or comments? I think this is a great introduction.
Yeah, thank you.
Very informative.
Thank you for allowing us to join you today.
Thanks, guys.
And before you leave, please make sure you hand over control back to the city so that we can resume our meeting.
Yes, I believe I've handed it back over to City Avalon.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on... Thank you, that was actually really good. Next item is consent calendar. If anybody after reviewing it would like to make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Aye.
Chairman Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Does anybody hear any kind of like back?
Yes, I do.
Feedback?
Like a little echo?
Yeah.
I heard it, it's gone. And I'm presuming that that was for items one and two, for the... Or was that just for the minutes? Let's do the motion on the item number two then. Approval of the resolution, we'll do it separately.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second on it?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for a vote?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Aye.
Chairman Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
So on to general business. Item number one?
Yeah, item number one. Commissioner Kennedy will be refusing from this item. He has a conflict of interest. I believe he will also be acting as the applicant on behalf of the owners on this item. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. The item before you today is an application for a site plan. This is a request to remodel an existing space located within the Catalina Casino Building, located at One Casino Way in Avalon, California. The owner is Caleb Lins and Christie Lins, or CNN Lins, Inc., doing business as Catalina Diver Supply. Acting on behalf of the owner is Bob Kennedy here. The property is located within the resort recreation low-density zone. The proposed site plan is categorically exempt under SEQA, under Section 15301. This is in regards to existing facilities. In addition, while the project is within the 300-foot appealable coastal zone, it is not subjected to a coastal development permit. As a scope of the project, further proposed renovations do not change the overall square footage and does not otherwise risk an adverse environmental impact or public access, nor does it constitute a change in the intensity of the underlying use of the structure. The previous... The previous space was utilized by the old Catalina Island Museum, is classified as a retail, and with the retail coming back in through the diver supply, there was no change in use. The proposed scope of work is consistent with the exemption provisions of the Public Resources Code. This would be Section 30601B and AMC, the Avalon Municipal Code, Section 9-8.102B2, for the reasons I already described. And Planning Commission or staff will be recommending planning, make a finding to that effect as well. In terms of the site plan, the project currently exists within the existing Catalina Casino Building. As mentioned, it was previously the Catalina Island Museum located within that space. The applicant is proposing to renovate the space and relocate an existing retail dive shop from its current location at 126 Catalina Avenue. The renovations will be consisting primarily of cosmetic updates, including painting of walls and ceilings, insulation of new furnishings, fixtures, and equipment, resurfacing the floor, and renovating the existing public bathrooms. The project does conform to all zoning codes and ordinances, and the project does not create any additional living or transient units, thus the requirement under the city's growth policy, as codified in the municipal code, which requires confirmation of water allocation or that a water reallocation is not required. In this case, it is not applicable. The project constitutes permissible remodel of an existing commercial structure under the city's 2021 growth policy, as adopted by the city council and as recommended by the Planning Commission. So with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission make three different findings. One, find the project categorically exempt under SEQA Section 15301D and E2AB for existing facilities. Approve the site plan as proposed with the standard listed conditions, and find that the project does not require a coastal development permit pursuant to AMC Section 9-8.102B2. And as mentioned, we have the applicant here for any questions. So with that, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Before we open the public hearing, any questions for staff? Seeing none, open the hearing. Hello? So good to see you.
Good to be here. One correction to the staff report. The location of the 126...the dive shop located 126 Catalina Avenue is moving into that facility. So are the contents of both trailers that are currently in the casino parking lot. So the trailers are going away.
So how about the outhouses? Are those?
That's a good question.
Maybe, maybe not, I guess.
That's a good question.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to remodel two of the bathrooms for our staff and gas...and guest use, but they will not be public restrooms.
So the public restrooms are still there, but they're closed?
And the city has...
Yeah, the city's porta-potties will continue to remain.
Okay. And that's really a separate...that's for the park in general, whether or not there are customers?
Right. I think the intent is at a later date to come up with some sort of plan to put restrooms, changing rooms, and shower facilities where the current trailers are located.
Are people migrating down to the dock? The casino dock?
The casino dock? The casino dock's fairly active.
Yeah.
A lot of folks go out and have lunch and a few parties here and there.
Thank you, yeah. Kind of off-topic a little. Thank you. Anything else before we...
Here to answer any questions you might have?
Any questions for Bob? Seems like a great idea, huh?
I'm excited that something's going back in that building.
Are you the only use in the casino now?
I think we're the only occupant right now, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
And anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing. Any general discussion or motion? Recommendations one, two, and three on the staff report?
I'll second.
And the second? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, call for a vote?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Aye.
Chairman Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carried. Item number...welcome back, Bob. Item number two.
Yeah, so item number two is an application also for a site plan. This is a request for a site plan to remodel 26 guest rooms, corridors, and the lobby at the Catalina Island Inn. This is located at 125 Red Bull Avenue in Avalon. The owner is Pacifica Catalina Island Inn, and the applicant acting on behalf of the owner is Nicole Holstein. The property is located within the commercial zone. Like the other project, the proposed site plan or proposed project is categorically exempt under Section 15301 of the state SEQA guidelines regarding existing facilities. Additionally, while the project is within the 300-foot appealable coastal zone, it is not subject to a coastal development permit. As a scope of the project, further proposed renovations do not change the overall square footage, nor does it otherwise risk an adverse environmental impact or public access, and does not constitute a change in the intensity of the underlying use of the structure. Structure before was a hotel, and they're just doing a remodel or refresh of those rooms. While the Avalon Municipal Code is more restrictive than the Public Resources Code, the municipal code allows certain developments to be excluded from the coastal permit, provided that the development is not a single-family dwelling, and it does not adversely affect the environment or public access, nor does it change the intensity of use of the structure. The proposed scope of work is consistent with the exemptions...exemption provisions of the Public Resources Code, found in Section 30601B and the AMC Section 9-8.102B2, for the reasons described. And such, staff is recommending that commission find...make a finding to that effect. In terms of the site plan, the project is located within the commercial zone, and it currently exists as a three-story hotel structure with 41 guest rooms. The proposed scope of work will renovate 26 of those 41 guest rooms, as well as the corridors and lobby area. The renovations will consist primarily of cosmetic updates, including the painting of walls and ceilings, insulation of new furnishings, fixtures, and equipment, bathroom updates, new carpeting replacement, new electrical outlets, receptacles, and smoke devices. The project conforms to all zoning and codes...zoning codes and ordinances, and does not create any additional living or transient units, thus the requirement under the city's growth policy, as codified in the municipal code, requiring confirmation of a water allocation or that a water allocation is not required, is not applicable. They do not need any water allocations. Further, the project constitutes a permissible remodel of an existing commercial structure under the city's 2021 growth policy, as adopted by both the Planning Commission and the city council. Therefore, staff's recommending that the Planning Commission make three findings. The first one is to find the project categorically exempt under SEQA Section 15301D and E2AB for existing facilities. The commission approved the site plan as proposed with the standard listed conditions, and that the...find that the project does not require a coastal development permit pursuant to the AMC Section 9-8.102B2. So with that, that concludes my report, and we do have the applicant here as well.
I have a question for staff.
Questions for staff?
I have a question for staff. Okay. So I just...I think I need a little bit of clarification. So I'm confused to the remodel. What you're saying constitutes as a remodel is painting and fixtures and electrical, but nothing like new constructions or nothing. No walls are being taken out or anything. Because this is like the first time that I've seen a hotel really come in front of us, because I thought a lot of that stuff was done administratively.
Yeah, so I can speak to why this is actually coming out, so...
I mean, I'm just trying to get from my information what the difference is because what is able to be done, like remodel. Like people do come to the planning department and get permits to do remodel, and then we never see them. So I'm just trying, for my education, I'm just trying to figure out where's the line where they need to be in front of us.
Sure. So the biggest issue is in the municipal code, under Section 9-3.613, there's a definition of minor renovation. So back in 1991, the Planning Commission had established a policy to allow some minor renovation projects to be approved administratively by staff. This is what you were talking about. This was revisited back in 2016 and was codified, and the definition for minor renovation means any project that is a temporary use of land or structures that is permitted...that is a permitted use in the zone, which both of these projects have been, and has a specific duration not to exceed 30 days, or any project that meets all of the following requirements. And so the bigger issue here is the requirements that...and there's about 10 of them, and I can read them off. But the one that pertains mostly is on both of these are items number D. So the first requirement is that the project only requires approval of a site plan, it does not require a variance conditional use permit, coastal development permit, zoning, or general plan amendment. This is just a site plan, so it would fall in line with that. The project does not create any additional bedrooms or kitchens, which this one is not. The project does not involve the expansion of exterior walls of any structure resulting in addition of 100 square feet. Again, this project meets that qualification. D, though, the project does not remodel, renovate, or reconstruct more than 25% of the floor area of any commercial or multi-unit residential structure. So they are over that 25% threshold. Thus, a site plan is required, and it needs to come before Planning Commission because it no longer is in the purview of being handled administratively by staff. For single-family residential structures, that site plan is actually increased, so the requirement is that the project does not remodel, renovate, or reconstruct more than 50% of that floor area of the single-family residential structure. So 25% of commercial and multifamily, 50% for single-family. There's some other ones that it does not create any fencing that's higher than six feet and is not doing anything to the setbacks, that it doesn't create new structures where none has previously existed. The project does not alter more than 20% of any side or roof of the structure. Again, this one is not. The project's not creating any deck balcony or overhang, which requires a variance or encroachment permit. That no renovation project has been approved or conditionally approved for the site that's subject to an application within the preceding 12 months, and that the project has no potential for resulting in a physical change in the environment, and is not a project for purposes of SEQA, and that it does not create or increase any non-conforming condition. So they met basically all of them. It's the threshold on there because they're renovating a significant portion of the interior. That's why.
Okay, no.
When you say renovating a significant portion, it sounds like it's redecorating more than it's renovating.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we...
So I guess...I guess what I'm just looking at as a citizen, I'm coming to you and I'm spending how much money on permits to redecorate my rooms?
$13,000.
Well, yeah.
Between all the permits they'll have, it'll be...
Does anybody else here think that sounds a little bit crazy?
Wait, let's hold that. I mean, just address staff, and then we'll talk to you. So yes, they are doing more than just painting, though. They are replacing doors, they're tearing up the kitchen...the existing bathrooms are re-tiling. It's not just painting. If it was just painting, staff would use its own discretion on that, but when you're making some physical changes to the layout, that's more than just resurfacing floors or repainting walls. There is some latitude in there. It's going to be a judgment call.
Someone's going to make their property better by replacing their couches and putting in new carpets, and we're going to charge them $13,000.
I mean, and that's...
If you're property, that didn't make much sense.
And that's why I ask, and I'm all for the permitting process because that's important because that regulates the contractors and the jobs being done correctly. I get that. I just didn't understand, but you said the 25%, so now I...
Yeah, I had the same question for Michael because I did the holiday only.
Yeah, and that's something that if you feel the threshold is too low, we can talk about that and propose a potential change. That would have to take place at the city council level because it would be amending, but it's something that the Planning Commission could recommend if you feel that the 25% is where you're kind of getting hung up on. The other thing too is unfortunately, I don't know if it was necessarily followed with fidelity for projects past, so we can only move forward from there.
Plus, I think you clarified that it's more than painting.
Yeah.
Well, and I was going to bring this item up from that side of the podium, and I figured that it would be inappropriate to do so, and it really doesn't have any bearing on this current applicant. But I would like to see us visit that as an item in the future because...and I don't mean to take your...
Yeah, no.
I don't mean to take your time on this, but let's use a house on the flats as an example. Somebody comes in and repaints, does some, you know, plaster repair, decides to put in hardwood floors throughout. That happens all the time in Avalon. That would trigger this ordinance. That would make that applicant or that person either do one of two things: not do the project or come here and pay $2,400, or make the project go underground, right? Where the city's not involved in it at all, right? And I don't think that that's what the authors intended when they were using a couple magic trip words, and those words are remodel and renovate, both of which are basically undefined and very subjective. Our current Director of Planning interprets it completely different than our former Director of Planning, because that word is subjective. I don't disagree with Michael's reading of the document and its interpretation. And I know that we have an attorney listening, but a lot of times, documents like that are produced so that they create more work and/or review. I'm not saying that that was the intent, but I think we should revisit it, and I think we need to look at it because we don't want these projects going underground. We don't want to put more of a burden on the public, but we do want some oversight on projects that are substantial and that may need some oversight. Because I don't know that anybody that remount...you know, we wind up with 10 or 12 hardwood floor projects going on in Avalon, that we're going to have the time to listen to them as much as is in addition to the other things that we're doing when we're trying to be planners. So I'd like to go back at some...or going forward, have a meeting and discuss the ordinance and what the intent is and review that so that it's easier also on staff to actually make that determination.
Right.
And we'll bring that back.
Yeah, because when I'm looking at this, it just looked like you're redecorating rooms. And if you're redecorating rooms and changing a light fixture, wow.
But I also believe in permitting pro...I believe that people need to go to the planning department, get plan check, do all that above board, and pay the fees that is required. But I just wasn't sure why she was in front of us, so now I know.
And to be in front of us...
I think we all have that question.
In a scope of a project that you're doing right now, $13,000 in permits is a lot of money. You know, we want to encourage these...
Improvement of our properties.
Improvement of the properties on the island to improve the visitor experience and so on. That's why she's doing it. But to throw 13 grand at this is a lot of dough.
Yes.
And actually, maybe at the end of this hearing, we can talk about having a talk because I'm also wondering...
What the speed schedules are?
You know, giving more of this to staff might be a good way to deal with it and take...site plans have always been an odd thing for the Planning Commission to review. So just look at that whole part, but let's bring that up and...
Move forward.
And discussions, and then we'll see if we need to have a hearing. But I think every...it seems like there's consensus that we should get around this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, open the hearing. Anybody wishing to testify?
I'm Nicole Holstein, General Manager of the Catalina Island Inn. I'm here for any questions you have. We purchased the property two years ago next month, so now it's time for us to renovate. Again, we're not touching 14 of the rooms that were good and nice and upgraded. We're just doing the 26 older, smaller rooms, trying to make them look bigger than they really are, just with the new furniture and the upgrades. So I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions? Good.
Thank you.
Of course.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
I have no comments.
No comments? Okay, close the public hearing. Thank you. Any general discussion or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan as presented.
I'll second.
And that included recommendations one, two, and three by staff?
It did.
Wonderful. And the second included that too?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Lucio, would you please call for a vote?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Aye.
Chairman Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So any planning director or city attorney? So any planning director or city attorney reports?
I just have one. In addition to adding the minor renovation projects to next month's conversation, we'll put that on the agenda. I just wanted to update the commissioners on the outcome of the revocation hearings. You had requested that four Camino de Flores have 30 days to cure, and I just wanted to report back that staff was in communication with the applicant, with the property owner, and the property owner has fulfilled all obligations and staff has been satisfied of meeting their cure. So they will be allowed to continue to keep their CUP unless the commission had any other direction on that. So with that, that's all I've got. Isaac, are you on?
I'm on, and I don't have anything as well, but thank you, Mike, and for taking notes about the item that came up from the commission's point of view this evening so that we can bring it back. Next one?
Thank you.
Commissioners business. Other than adding to next week, and I guess it's both what it does and who reviews it, I'm thinking. Because that, my question on it wasn't so much that it had to get a review, but it didn't really seem like a public hearing was necessary. So if we could shift more administrative-like functions to staff.
It was actually listed under general business, not under.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah.
But anyway. I kind of noticed that, but ignored it. Okay.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Anything else for commissioners? Anything from the audience?
All of you.
Denise? I don't know if you count as audience, but.